Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Today's May 4th. My name is Dan Hillmer. I'm serving as mayor this year. Consistent with the Brown Act as amended by Assembly Bill 361 in 2021, the city council may meet by teleconference, in person, or in a hybrid manner. You may submit public comments by emailing the city clerk at cityoflarkspur.org prior to 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting or after. You may attend the meeting in person in the council chambers or we may select. If you want to make public comment and you're attending by Zoom, please select the quote raise hand icon in the Zoom meeting or dial nine if calling into the meeting. I mean, star nine, pardon me. The first item on this evening's agenda is a roll call. May we please have the roll?
Councilmember Candell.
I'm here.
Councilmember Harof.
I'm here.
Councilmember Way.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Here.
Mayor Hillmer.
Here. Consistent with a custom we've had the last couple of years, if you're able, please join us in our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. The next item on this evening's agenda is public comment. If you have items that you would like to mention to the council or ask questions on items that are not on the agenda this evening, you may do so at this time. I will give you three minutes. Good evening. Please tell us who you are and where you live.
Frank Kaiso. I represent the Left Bank on the corner of Magnolia and Ward Street in Larkspur. I oversee that operation and have for the past seven years. I was here, I'm here tonight to request that the city agendas, vote or talk about extending the permits for the parklets in Larkspur for one year. I just wanted to put in as well that, you know, Left Bank has spent over $100,000 on its parklet to help keep the community safe and festive. Really happy to hear that there will be a special meeting on May 23rd to talk about the parklets. I do though, just again, want to request a individual agenda topic on extending the Left Bank's Ward Street parket, parklet, individually from all the other parklets in Larkspur until June 30th, 2023. The Left Bank parklet sits on Ward Street, not on Magnolia. It doesn't block any other merchant stores and it just takes up three parking spots that sit right beside the Left Bank. I would also like to ask that the city agendas a hearing to talk about turning the parking lot across the street from the Left Bank into a paid parking lot. And I think that would help the city alleviate some of the parking issues that merchants think that we have. For someone that observes that parking lot throughout the day for the last six years, there's many commuters that say park their car in the lot. They leave the car there throughout the day. Many, many people go over those two hour limits. And if we really are concerned about parking in Larkspur, I think we should definitely be talking about turning the free lot into a paid lot. That's all I have to say.
We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other public comments from those attending via Zoom?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members in Zoom. And there's no public comment.
Thank you very much, Allison. Normally we have presentations and proclamations at this point in the agenda. This evening we have none. The next item would be consideration of approval of the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that council members would like to remove for questions or further discussion? Please let me know that at this point. Scott?
Yeah, I'd like to remove, I believe it's 4.6. I don't have the agenda in front of me. It's the last one.
All right, we'll pull 4.6 for discussion. Are there any other items council members wish to remove for discussion? Are there any members of the public that want to remove items or for further questions or discussion?
I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And our first comment will come from James Holmes.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I was going to ask for 4.62. Thank you very much.
I think I heard the question, but I must say the audio is not that clear in the council chambers. So I believe Mr. Holmes requested the same item pulled for discussion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. If there are no further items that members of the council or members of the public would like to pull for further consideration, we'll hold 4.6 for the moment. And I would consider a motion for approval of the balance of the consent calendar.
I'd be happy to make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
The city clerk has.
I apologize. I see a hand going up and down as they're talking. I was wondering if we could take a moment to call for additional public comment.
Sure. Additional public comment.
Duncan McCandless. I see that your hand was raised and lowered a few times.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. This is not pertinent to anything that's on the agenda. And how many minutes do I have?
Three minutes.
All right, well, it result, it.
We'll do it at the time we discuss the item. Which item would you like to have us pull for discussion?
It, well, it's not on your agenda.
Oh, this is pure public comment.
Yes, I missed it because my hand is going up and down and it was up when and bypassed. So I.
My apologies, sir. We'll return to public comment. Please proceed. You have three minutes.
No, that's, that's fine. Thank you so much. I'm a resident at the Skylark Apartments, which has recently been sold and changed management. And I've been there for 23 years. I'm 80 years old. It's my home and I was expecting and intending it to remain so, but I don't think that that's in the cards. There's a huge rent increase, the maximum. And I'm begging you and I'm begging anybody in Marin County to really think about what's going on with the demographics of citizenry such as myself, who at my age, I'm on a very fixed income and I'm being squeezed and so are many of my neighbors. And I don't think many of them, as communities break up, they don't have a single united voice. And I beg you, beg you to really consider what's going on. There are innumerable complaints about the management. It's very harsh. It's rude. It's insensitive and it's extremely pretentious about what they're doing up there. And I think you must be familiar with it because it has a lot of your taxpayers. I'm one of them. And blah, blah, blah. So I don't want to take up your time, but I want to squeeze these words in and hope that you'll make this something that you'll look into and curate. And obviously it's not a charity to rent, but it shouldn't be something where one is always on edge and it's getting to be disastrous in Marin in general. I mean, if I have to move, I will not be able to remain in the county. And you may find me in Manteca if I'm, if I'm lucky, maybe even farther than that. So I again plead with you to make this an issue or at least something that you investigate and consider. Because if you, if you don't, if you just keep moving it down and the county keeps moving it down, it's, you're just going to end up with a. I don't know what you're going to end up with, but you won't, you won't end up with the value that I had. And I've added it for the long time that I've lived here. And prior to that, in Mill Valley, and I love the county and I'd like to be able to remain in it. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Are there further public comments this evening?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands from our audience members. And there's no further public comment.
Okay, we will close public comment at this time and we'll move to consideration of approval of the balance of consent, of the consent calendar excluding item 4.6. And I believe Councilmember Harof made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, I have an emotion and a second. With the city clerk, please call the roll call vote.
Councilmember Candell.
Yes.
Councilmember Harof.
Yes.
Councilmember Way.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Hillmer.
Yes. Now we'll return to item 4.6. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is an agenda item to present to you a request that came to us from Episcopal Community Services. It also has the support of the County of Marin. It's a request for the council to consider waiving applicable building fees that were charged for the development project that's occurring at 1251 South Alicia Drive under the Project Home Key Program. The council in its housing element, its adopted housing element, not the one we're working on now, has a policy that states that the council will consider waiving such fees in support of various types of housing projects. And among those are projects that are directed toward the homeless, seniors and other disadvantaged individuals. And so the request is consistent with the adopted policy of the council. Additionally, the California Department of Housing and Community Development requires us to file a report each year. And in filing that report, one of the questions they have is if you're fulfilling your goals and policy objectives in your adopted housing element. And so if you choose to waive this fee this evening, then you would be able to report to HCD that in the current year you had had met one of those policy goals. The council has done this in the past, most recently for the Homeward Bound Project on King Street. And so there is precedent set in that regard. With all that said, you're not required to do this. It's an option for the council. It's also something you could, if you have questions, consider giving us the questions and we can come back with this request as well. Turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Are there questions regarding this item from council members? Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason I wanted to pull this is, as you know, I am on the committee with Catherine. And throughout this process, I have been desperately putting a hand out in a hope that the county would take it and be the city's partner in this project. Talk to the city, engage with the city. Take our requests seriously. While I am happy, all the subcommittees are being formed right now, I still don't feel that we are being given the partnership role that I would like to see us have. And waiving a $73,000 fee is something that I think we would do to somebody. We would offer to somebody who has been a partner to us. Having said that, I am optimistic that moving forward, we, the county would engage with us at a, at a better level. And therefore I am going to request that instead of either granting or denying this, that we continue this for a month, not vote on this and give the county an opportunity to, to engage us at a level that I think would be appropriate, considering that this project is going to be within the city boundaries.
Are there other council members that have questions regarding this item?
I do.
Catherine.
Councilmember.
This is a question for staff. If, I know the county Board of Supervisors will be hearing an update on this project at their May 10th meeting. And it involves a lot of contracts that need to be signed in regards to the property moving forward, which are part of state requirements and other requirements from the housing and urban development and others. Is, if we postpone this decision on 4.6, will that affect that May 10th presentation or their finances? Or do we have any idea about that?
It's my understanding it would have no effect on the items that the Board of Supervisors are considering. If I understand the flow of this money correctly, if the council approves the fee waiver and we reimburse Episcopal Community Services, it essentially reduces the amount of support they need from the county by $73,000. And so it would free up $73,000 of county money for some other program. It's kind of how I think the flow of money ultimately would work. Some other homeless oriented program, not any old program.
Well, maybe to Councilmember Candell's point, that should maybe be better clarified to us. Because we're just hypothesizing that it frees it up for others purposes, but it is $73,000 of our budget. While the large bulk of this money is going to the county. Just putting that forward. I, I, I hear you, Scott, that we are not getting as much information as we could possibly, we should be asking for.
And, and I'm sorry, I would also just add that, oops, I'm on mute. Oh, no, I'm not. Okay, good. I would also just add that as this project progresses, I think that there is going to be a financial responsibility that the city of Larkspur is going to have to bear. And I think we're going to need this $73,000 later in order to deal with some of the repercussions of having this project in the city of Larkspur. So just another thing for, for the council to consider.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yeah, um, this might be for the. Sorry, this might be for the city manager. I'm not sure the city attorney or just the council. I'm understanding that, and I'm supportive of Councilmember Candell's, you know, wanting to increase the partnership to increase her voice. But I'm wondering if just withholding this payment sends any kind of message? Or, you know, it may be looked seen as a billing error or an accounting error. I mean, is the, is it more effective to have a statement accompanying this saying that, you know, we're looking for certain conditions? I'm not sure what the strategy is here of withholding money. I mean, does it really send a message at all is my question?
Other council member questions? I have one. Would it be fair to ask the county if we waived the fees that the $73,000 could be directed toward project costs? Hard costs on site? So that we are getting some value for our consideration of this? Are we not able to condition it in that way?
I, I don't have an answer. I'd have to go back to get greater clarity on the flow of money between Episcopal Community Services and the county. Most of this money that's being moved around is highly restricted money. And so it's, it's not going to flow into the county's general fund. It's going to remain in housing or homeless oriented services, whether or not with ECS or with the county.
Yeah, sorry, follow up question?
Councilmember Candell.
Thank you. To the city manager, question is if we wanted to, would we be able to say, okay, instead of waiving this fee, we're going to collect that $73,000 fee and we're going to earmark it to use towards this project as a way that we, the city of Larkspur, feel would be appropriate as opposed to waiving this fee? And the county then has $73,000 to use as they feel is appropriate. It's just in a way so that if, if the citizens of Larkspur, Larkspur determine that they would like something to accompany this project, you know, whether it's staffing or, you know, infrastructure. I don't know exactly what it is that we would have some funds in order to do what is in our community's best interest.
There's two points to, if you don't waive this, if you don't honor, if you don't approve this request, then the Larkspur General Fund still retains $73,000. You can then tell me what you want to do with $73,000 during the budget process. And that, that's just a given part of our practices. You can't, even if you put conditions and say you're willing to put the money into something related to the project, you can't then report to HCD that you pursued one of your policies. So that's part of what you also have to decide is if you want to comply with policy you adopted in the housing element. So, and I certainly, you could defer this and I could have Elise Simone and at the next meeting talk about why you might or might not want to do that.
Do, is anything lost by waiting?
No, there's no, there's no time pressure here.
Okay.
So.
Other council member questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Please, Councilmember Harof.
I, I think the city manager actually addressed the questions that, that I had. This waiver would be consistent with our past practice and policy.
During my tenure, you've done this once before and you do have an adopted policy.
And the waiver also would create opportunities for us to engage with HCD in a more positive way than if we were to not pursue this action. That's what I'm hearing as well.
I think so. And I just got a note from the city clerk that Elise is available on Zoom. If you do want to hear from her about HCD. If she's ready, I hope I'm not putting her on the spot.
I would consider that helpful to the staff report.
Okay. Can we bring Elise over and put her on the spot? Hopefully she's ready.
Yes, Elise, I'm unmuted you. I see, Elise, you've unmuted yourself, but we're not hearing you.
I guess we have technical difficulties today. Okay, maybe we need to postpone.
Okay.
In any event, Mr. City Manager, I appreciate the, the opportunity to have that conversation.
It certainly might be valuable to understand how HCD interprets when we file the report of how we've complied with the housing element each year.
Yeah, and that's, that, that's the reason I asked that question because this is a, I don't want to minimize the significance of this issue, but I think it's important to have it placed into the context of the overall work that we're doing on the housing element. And that is a process that requires significant engagement with HCD over time. And I think we need to be mindful of unintended consequences.
I appreciate that there are multiple audiences here while watching what we do. And it's going to affect different audiences in different ways. So I would want, I want more information.
Okay. We will bring this back.
Do we need to take any action at all?
I believe I have direction to defer it to a future meeting.
Thank you very much. We will bring this item back with additional information. City clerk? Councilmember? Okay, Councilmember Candell, and then we'll go for public comment.
No, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that we did have public comments. I see their hands up on Zoom. That was all.
All right, let's take public comment on this item.
Our first comment will come from Duncan McCandless.
I've already made a comment, but I'm enjoying watching this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, lower your head. Our next comment will come from Kevin Carroll.
Good evening. The only thing I would add, as you know, I'm in favor of the project. But the bottom line is I'm paying for it. Either through my federal taxes, my state taxes, et cetera. And so it's a question of money coming out of one pocket to another. But I think the important thing in the staff report would be to have the drop dead date of when you have to make a decision. And I don't see any problem with you holding it over the county until then. Because quite frankly, I have followed the homelessness issue in Sausalito, Nevada and San Rafael. Because as I've said before, I have a son who is mentally ill and homeless. And the one thing I've seen in all three cities, who all have wonderful staff that are trying to deal with this problem. I think that needs to be said. But the bottom line is there's a lot of unreimbursed expenses that come along with this and you have no control over. And it's forced down your throat by these other entities. And so I think holding out to the last minute. I also understand the importance of complying with HCD, but I think it does send a message to both entities to listen more carefully to you if you hold it out as long as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional public comment?
Our next comment will come from James Holmes.
Of James Holmes, Larkspur. I'd like to ask a quick question and then depending on the answer, make your comment. Question, would the 44 units created by the project count toward satisfying Larkspur's regional housing needs allocation? Yes. Yes, it will.
The answer is yes.
Okay. I, I think that under those circumstances, well, 73,000 is a significant amount. But I note that only 14,000 or so is internal staff costs and most of it, 55,000 or so is out of pocket to a consultant, according to staff reports. While I understand the gesture of showing furtherance of the general plan policy, I think that a fair compromise would be to waive the our internal costs, but not the $55,000 or so out of pocket costs. Please keep in mind that none of these fees are coming out of Episcopal's pocket or the LLC it's set up. The request letter itself says that the project is funded by a combination of California Department of Housing Program funds and local matching funds. So it seems to make sense under the circumstances that the agencies, the lead agencies pushing and funding the projects should bear the bulk of the costs rather than shifting those costs to Larkspur. Larkspur will already have born and will bear significant costs in connection with it. Episcopal's letter says, quote, "We ask your assistance on this matter, knowing that each dollar saved can go back to improved outcomes for the most vulnerable." Unquote. There is actually no evidence whatever to support that statement. And as indicated, the money would actually go waived, go back to the county or other funding agencies. Therefore, I would say to waive the internal costs as a gesture toward general plan fulfillment, but don't waive the out of pocket costs paid to the consultant.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to make public comment on this item?
No raised hands? And there's no further public comment?
All right, thank you very much. We've provided direction to the city manager to bring this item back at a future meeting. I can, that concludes the item. The next item on the agenda this evening is the city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. A few items. Foremost, want to make sure the public is aware. I know the council is aware. We have two impending vacancies on the Planning Commission. We have two planning commissioners that have indicated that they would like to step down at the end of their terms. So we have on our website now this, and we've been post, pushing out a solicitation of interest. We strongly encourage people who may be interested in the Planning Commission to submit an application and encourage the council members, the audience. Please get the word out to anyone you think might be interested. And again, you'll find all the details at a link on our homepage. Also, and I wouldn't be surprised if some of the council members are going to talk a little bit about this, but I just want to make sure it's not forgotten that the 70th birthday party of the Monir Shopping Center is occurring this Saturday, starts at 11:00 AM. I hope we'll see many folks there. It's, it's a port part of our community. And I know, and I suspect I'll see a nod from our two council members living in Greenbrier, that Greenbrier residents have always told me in a lot of respects, that's Greenbrier's downtown and a gathering place. And I, I do know some of our most effective outreach to that part of Larkspur occurs at the Pete's Coffee, just by putting a table out in front of it. So I hope folks will take that opportunity to celebrate. And there's been a lot of exciting new changes at the center over the last couple of years. And so I hope folks will check that out. And then lastly, we will be making some announcements formally here shortly, but we are planning to bring to you on May 23rd. we are planning to bring to you on May 23rd, a special meeting of the council to focus on the issue of the parklets in the downtown area. This is, as the council knows, there's a deadline of June 30 for removal of the parklets and probably not surprisingly, several of the merchants have submitted requests that the council hold an item to discuss that. We will push that notice out so that the community is aware we're going to have this opportunity for discussion. And then lastly, I think within a week or so, we'll be making an announcement to hold a celebration for the Bon Air Bridge, which is for all intents and purposes done, they're still sort of doing a little touch up paint here and there. It's going to be a very modest celebration. We're really space constraint constrained when you to find a place where we could have any sort of gathering. And we really don't want to close a bridge for any extended period of time, so I think we'll do a very brief closure so we can have a proper ribbon cutting and then we'll do some sort of really simple ceremony on the side of the bridge. But we'll have details about that that we'll be providing to the council and the community as soon, probably in the next week or so. So that I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. Good news. Are there questions of the city manager and his report this evening from council members?
Mr. Mayor, no, no questions, but a couple of comments.
Please, Councilmember Harrow.
First, thanks for the reminder about the celebration of Bon Air coming up this weekend. Should be exciting. The Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring a, what, what I was taught was a beanbag toss when I was a kid. But it is actually called here a cornhole. I'm not quite sure what the difference is. But in any event, the Chamber of Commerce will be sponsoring that event and I will be there to support the logistics in ways that I don't know quite yet what they may be. Also, I just wanted to reflect on your comments about the bridge. I drove across the bridge tonight. I think that for the, for the very first time, it really truly looks like a completed bridge. There are people going across in both directions. The sidewalks look terrific. The lighting systems look terrific. It looks like we've done our job and I look forward to whatever celebration we can put together to commemorate the completion of that wonderful project.
Kudos to the bridge team. Looks better every day. Are there other questions or comments for the city manager regarding his report this evening from council members? Are there members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on the city manager's report this evening?
Looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there's no public comment.
Thank you very much. We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to our business items. We have one item, 8.1. It's a oh, I'm sorry, I've jumped over council members' oral reports and comments. Are there council members that have reports this evening?
Kevin? I do have a brief comment I'd like to provide. Having just mentioned the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to provide a re, just a brief report about the chamber of which I have for some time now been a member on the Board of Directors. Recently, I was asked to serve as the chamber's treasurer, which is essentially a ministerial position to make sure receipts are accounted for and bills get paid. Last week, due to the unexpected resignation of the board's president, Sam Plavon, I have been asked by the board to serve as the chamber's president on an interim basis. And I have agreed to serve in that role as well. In doing so, however, I am mindful of the potential for actual or perceived conflicts of interest created by my concurrent role as a member of the Larkspur City Council. It is my intention with advice from the city manager and city attorney to take all steps needed to avoid those potential conflicts. Among other things, it is my intention specifically to recuse myself from any decisions by the city council that directly implicate the chamber's interests, including decisions by the council that may specifically relate to the chamber as part of the city's ongoing budgetary process. It also is my intention not to involve myself in direct discussions with the city over its financial support of the chamber's business activities. I will leave it to other chamber members, chamber board members to assist our executive director in representing the chamber's interests in those conversations. I do intend, however, to otherwise remain active in the city's overall budgetary deliberations, including tonight's discussion, which I look forward to. I also look forward to continuing my support for our increasingly vibrant Chamber of Commerce. That's it for my report.
Thank you very much. Are you entertaining questions? Maybe I'll take it up with you after the meeting. I think, let's do that.
How are you would like?
I think that would be best. Thank you very much. Are there other council member oral reports or comments this evening? Catherine Way.
Yes, I am one of two representatives to the South Aliso Project Home Key. And since we last met, that group, the Community Advisory Committee has met in total and also the Public Safety Subcommittee that I'm a member of. They just launched the first public newsletter that's available for the community to see the work that's being done. And I think that's available at the 1251 South Aliso web page. We're also asking that there be a landing spot on the Larkspur city website as this matures, but this is the first one. Also, the community is invited to a ribbon cutting at the Corte Madera site, which is a similar project and it's this Friday from 10 to 1. And that's the building that's next to, hold on, something's happening in my house here. That's the building that's on Meadow Suite. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Other council member reports this evening. Vice Mayor Paulson.
Great, thank you. Just two brief things. One is on the, the housing element, we have the committee meeting at the end of this month and I just wanted to say that I'm planning to really reach out to as many people as I can. I, you know, got all the, the information which we can download from the website. It's really easy to follow the maps, the properties. And I'll try to engage community members in North Magnolia, Green Bay and Central Larkspur and maybe at Pete's Coffee or whatever, and I'll kind of keep the, the council posted mostly to promote awareness and interest and really get people engaged because I think this is such an important process. And I don't know that it, it's really getting the publicity or I don't know that people are really engaging as much as they should if they knew what was going on. So I'll have more to say about that. The other second comment is I started at the beginning in 2019 as a liaison to the Larkspur Corte Madera School District. And, and I know council member Candel and I were part of that and during the whole COVID time, you're looking at their finances. And I never really got to come back to the council and say what that amounted to. So I just wanted to take 30 or 60 seconds and I met with Superintendent Brett Geitman yesterday. And I really wanted to, you know, kind of look at what that partnership is and what, what has happened. One thing is, is at the time they were stressed with COVID and, and you know, all the financial pressures and all the agencies feel. And what I really tried to encourage them to do is look at their debt and try to restructure their debt. You know, we had some great experiences with our pension obligation bond and, you know, I talked a lot to Larry Chu and lessons learned. And they, they did find a way to refinance their facilities debt to the tune of several million dollar savings of which money is going back to the taxpayer. So the bond, you know, money is actually, there, there should be a reduction in, in tax payments. Now, the second thing is I was pretty pleased with how they handled the whole COVID situation. So for anybody who's looked at the Marin Grand Jury Report on COVID and best practices, the Larkspur Corte Madera was cited as one of the best practices. They got all their students back October 5th of 2020. And they managed also to reduce their staff budgets by 10% and, and generally maintain their services. And they do that while being at the bottom quarter of staff pay in the county. So with all that, I feel, you know, like I want to continue working with them. I hope they have a chance to be here, you know, they're representative. So we know they're across the street from the library. They're next to Piper. I think they're an important partner to us. And, and also, you know, as we all know, there, you know, there are bond measure, measure is coming up and I did endorse and I've looked pretty closely at, at cost Marin and at Better Together. And, you know, weighing those arguments, I think there's some strong reasons to, you know, to think about it twice. But I just wanted to encourage people to at least, at least the council members to, you know, look at the issue and, and make your decision if you think it's worth supporting. I do and I encourage others to look at that. So again, I feel really, you know, hopefully more positive, you know, working relationship or continuing to work with, with the Larkspur Corte Madera Schools and that's it for my report.
Thank you very much. I just, I have one brief report. Vice Mayor Paulson and I conducted interviews for considering applications for our planning commission, I'm sorry, our Park and Rec Commission and our Heritage Board this afternoon. We had two applicants for each and they were applicants, they were existing board members and commission members applying for reappointment. And I only want to comment that generally I'm finding that the quality of board members and commissioners in the city of Larkspur is at such an amazing high level, especially that they, we have people wanting to be reappointed to serve more than one term and, and we're hearing from them that it's because of the positive experience. So I want to just mention that and encourage others to apply when we have openings that come up on our boards and commission, commissions, because it's a, it's a great learning experience. It's a great social and cultural experience as reported by the members. Other, anything else on council member reports? All right, we'll move to the business calendar. We have one item this evening. It's a fiscal, fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget overview, assumptions and trends. We'll get a presentation. This is a continuation of a discussion from a previous meeting. Maybe have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm going to use a PowerPoint to take you through a presentation. I'm joined in the audience here in the council chamber by Administrative Services Director Kathy Orm. So if you have any really difficult questions, I'll probably have to call her up to the microphone to save me, but I'll do my best. So it is May the 4th, so bear with me as I go through this presentation. To start out with, for our preliminary fiscal year 22, 23 budget conversation, I thought we should talk about our new hopes. So our new hope, first of all, this year that we're going to bring you a balanced budget. We haven't been able to do that during COVID, so we're pretty excited to do that for you this year. We've had to make a few challenging decisions that I'll, I'll touch on briefly here in terms of what we can and can't pay for and some of the assumptions. The good news is we're balancing the budget. We're also building in, I mentioned at our last meeting, we're building in some transition plans. We're getting the staff back to the service levels that we need to, to be fully operational and fully open. And we're still able to balance the budget. A big part of that is because of some of the assumptions that we're making. One of the biggest assumptions that we're going to make and you'll see in this budget, you see in the preliminary numbers that you have in your packet is that we think sales tax will be back to pre-pandemic levels. This is faster than we thought it would occur. And that assumption is being built after numerous meetings with HDL, our sales tax consultant, to talk about trends going on in Larkspur at the brick and mortar stores and trends going on in the, on the internet and how those monies flow to Larkspur. This evening, we're focusing on the general fund, but I can tell you in a lot of respects, Measure B is even more robust because that internet purchasing is so strong in Larkspur. And we're having a lot of goods and services shipped into Larkspur where we get to charge Measure B tax on, on them. So that's actually helping us have confidence that these numbers are correct. But I don't want to discount particularly the two shopping centers have really bounced back and are doing quite well. The, the Bon Air Shopping Center and Marin Country Mart. They've, they went through, whoops, they went through their, their tough period, just like a lot of brick and mortar, but I think they've come through strong and adapted well. Some of the other things that are assumed in this budget, we still think property tax is going to remain quite strong. Probably we're going to continue to see values at least maintain, if not rise. And the assessor has a great track record in Marin in terms of predicting where property taxes will land. A lot of this is supply and demand that despite what's going on in the economy that may or may not be affecting trends nationwide, Marin continues to have a very robust market in terms of value in what people are paying for homes. So we should continue to see that rise. The other thing is while we're still trying to be fairly conservative about transient occupancy tax or hotel tax, with a lot of signs that the courtyard by Marriott that's out at Larkspur Landing has bounced back quite a bit. It's not at pre-pandemic levels, but just as it was a high performer before the pandemic, it's a high performer again now. So we're actually have the, the TOT running at about two thirds where it was before the pandemic, which is a pretty healthy number. It's actually much stronger than we historically had planned for TOT. It's just not at those really robust levels we were having right before the pandemic. But again, these are key assumptions, so we're a little more bullish than we've been in some of the recent years in terms of where our revenues are going to be and what we can afford to pay for going forward. And it's not a good presentation about the budget unless we show you some of the excellent graphs that Kathy puts together for you. And Kathy and I like pie charts, so you have a printout of this that's probably a little easier for you to read in your agenda packet. But here on the screen, you see where all of the money's coming into the city, where it's coming from. And yet, if you want to know about any of these categories, because within them's quite a few subcategories, we're happy to talk about any of the breakdown in there. As you can see, we're still predominantly a property tax talent, as is most of Southern and Central Marin. Okay, with all that said, there's always concerns that we need to talk about. And so we always have these phantom menaces that are out there in the, and I put menaces because we have more than one. So the concerns that we have that we need to be aware of. Probably the most glaring is that we still are struggling to meet our goals in terms of funding our OPEB trust. So that's our retiree, our commitment to pass employees and there's still a few employees left active who are entitled to this benefit. We should be putting money into a trust account that would be set aside to deal with this unfunded liability. We have this liability studied every year. And we should, for several years now, we had hoped our target would be to put half a million dollars per year into the trust. We haven't been able to achieve that goal. What I think we're going to be doing in the next month or two is talking about some of that cash that we held for the Bon Air Bridge and whether some of it should go into the OPEB trust to make up for years that we weren't able to, to hit that half billion dollar goal. Kathy tells me the actuary is now saying we probably should be putting $700,000 into the trust annually to get us to our goal. So we'll be bringing a more robust discussion about that probably in June or July. But it is a concern that it's not built into the budget. The good news is we're tracking to where there may be some surplus funds at the end of this fiscal year. And one of the things you had always said to us is, once we've kind of climbed our way out of the cash flow issues around the bridge, surplus funds should be dealing with things like unfunded liability. So we'll have an opportunity to have that as part of the discussion as well. We still have to talk about deteriorating infrastructure. The council knows, bring it up quite often with you. It's been so thrilling to have the community support us and have the trust in us. and have the trust in us to rebuild the roads. I think Julian Skinner, our Public Works Director and his team done an amazing job. But that's only one of our major infrastructure challenges. We have other ones. The building that we're in is one of them. The firehouses are another, but the one, of course, that the council sometimes asks me what keeps me up at night. And I'm particularly concerned about our storm drains, that sort of hidden deteriorating infrastructure that a lot of us don't see. We've had some sinkholes. We've been very fortunate that no one got hurt, no major property damage other than the sinkhole itself. But that's kind of one of those things where you you just are thankful, could have gone the other way. We've got an aging system, decades of accumulated and deferred maintenance that need to be dealt with. And so that's going to be a topic we talk about quite a bit in the coming months. And then there's the new big nasty everybody's talking about in the economy, which is inflation. And rightly, some folks have been asking, well, you know, what does inflation mean for the city? And of course, council members who've been with us a while, public members who've sat through many of our budget presentations know municipal government has a funny deal in that there's kind of a lag in how money flows into us. And so what happens in the economy can sometimes take us, take a little bit before we feel the effects. Inflation's a tricky, tricky one, though, because the rising cost of doing business happens right away. So we're just like everybody else. Everything we're buying is starting to cost more money. So we're dealing with that. So it's fortunate that we're seeing an uptick in revenue to help us with that. But there will be pressures on our payroll and those will come quickly when you have inflationary factors in place become concerned about their ability to make ends meet. And we start to have retention issues if they feel they can go elsewhere to keep up with inflation. So we'll have some pressures on. And then historically, in states that have caps on property tax, such as California with Proposition thirteen, historically, that has created problems during inflationary periods because eventually the growth in property tax cannot keep up with inflation. Now, I'm not saying that necessarily will happen here. And as I just said in the last slide, Marin is kind of its own unique universe in the world of property tax and that we typically still see upticks even when the economy is flattening because of supply and demand and the desirability to live here. But all that said, historically, when you control property tax and you don't let it to grow, grow with inflation and inflation starts to significantly outpace property tax, municipal governments start to feel that. There's probably about a one-year lag in feeling that, but we will start to. So that is something to be aware of and be sensitive to, probably not so much in this fiscal year budget, but in the subsequent one, if the trends continue. And then on the pretty graph side of things, here's your expense breakdown. Your two large triangles are your two public safety expenditures. So we're very similar to most cities that their budgets are dominated by public safety costs. I will say, we're doing great, though, Larkspur by working in a J P A for both police and a J P A for fire have been, we've been able to manage with our partners to have robust services while keeping the growth of those costs more, a little flatter than other agencies have. And, you know, if we poured into other city budgets, we'd find a number of them where these two pieces of the pie chart are making up sixty, seventy percent of the budget. And that's not the case for us, but could certainly be at some point if we don't continue to manage it and continue to work with our partnerships. And again, I'm happy to jump into these different areas in the budget some more. At this session, we usually keep this at a high level. Your next session, you get the line items and that's when on the expenditure side, you tend to really dig into these particular costs in detail.
Can I ask you a question, Dan?
Yeah.
In the past, I remember budget presentations where we had heard, and this is on more than one occasion, and and it was common knowledge that our public safety costs were roughly eighty percent of our budget. What would you consider the percentage shown on this slide?
Kathy, I got a sense off the top of your head.
It looks like about half.
I was gonna say it's slightly more than half.
That's a big change.
Yeah. I I would have gone fifty-five to sixty percent.
I was gonna say, I think it's around sixty percent.
So would you say that change is a result of sharing services?
It's a result of two things. It's while the J P A's at times see see spikes in their costs. And certainly when we joined with Corde Madera to build a fire J P A, we had a huge jump in costs. Being in a J P A lets us keep the long-term costs much flatter than a lot of other agencies experience. So you're starting to see some of that. It's a little tricky in fire, just as an aside, because there's been a huge paradigm shift to reinvest in fire prevention. And that has required us to grow the budget in fire so that we have the resources to do fire prevention properly. The other thing that's going on here, though, is is we've expanded city services in other places. So the other parts of the budget are growing. And so those pieces of the pie represented by public safety have shrunk. A way to interpret that is the prudent management of the public safety cost is allowing us to invest money in other operations in the city and provide other services to the community.
Thank you. This is the first, I believe, concrete presentation of the benefits we're seeing by those collective actions. And I really, we we were warned in the past that initially costs would spike, but that then they would flatten out. And I'm just saying, I'm saying this is the first real-time information I've seen that that in fact has played out. Congratulations.
Well, it's, I I appreciate you saying that, but it's it's a a team effort. A lot of folks work. I I really do. If folks want to understand in detail what I'm talking about, you can go to Centralman Police's website and really look at the trend of costs and then take a step back and say, three small cities in Marin County are collectively operating a full-blown police department that has an investigation bureau, that has a command staff doing all the duties we would expect, that has non-sworn functions. And that's not what every city our size gets to enjoy. And the fact that we get to enjoy it at a manageable budget cost is is really special. And I think we're going to achieve that same economies of scale of fire. We're just still in the early phases of getting staffing levels and services where we want them to be.
Great news. Thank you.
Mayor, since we've taken a pause, can we ask some questions?
Please, Catherine, Councilmember Harof had a hand up and then we'll go to you.
Great, thanks.
Thanks. My hand wasn't actually up. I just opened my mouth. But I wanted to echo what the mayor just said, having been on this council now for a while and having gone through the discussions that we've had over time about consolidation of services, creating JPAs, working together with our neighbors to create efficiencies in the services that we provide, particularly in public safety. This is good news. This is what we hoped to have when we had these discussions at the outset. So to all of those who have participated in the decisions and in the work to make these organizations successful, I am personally grateful and I'm sure our community is as well.
Councilmember Way.
My question has to do with property tax, since we rely so heavily on property tax. Proposition nineteen, which was passed last year or the year before, permits a property owner to transfer property tax inter-county, which was prohibited under Proposition thirteen. So it allows someone to sell a property, let's say in Alameda County, and take that property tax with them when they buy in Marin County. So I was reading a, on the, in the San Francisco Chronicle the other day, an investigative report about that it's increasing in Marin. I I just want to keep this on our radar because the example that was given in the report was a couple who sold a property in, I think it was Alameda County, and bought a condominium in Tiburon and were able to transfer their property tax, which was markedly lower because they had been a property owner in in a different county for a very long period of time. So just wondered if, as we move forward, that we keep an eye on if that's happening here. And I'm particularly interested in it because a lot of people who've been in primary residences for a long time and are aging out of those residences will sell them and then buy into a smaller place like a condominium, which we do have a lot of here in Larkspur, particularly in the Bonner Hillside area. So just putting that out there that this may be an issue. I don't know how big it will be in Larkspur, but this Proposition nineteen, we may need to keep better on our radar. So that's my subject.
Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yeah, I was wondering, city manager, or maybe Kathy, if you can clarify the last two graphs. So the PERS graph, you know, shows a real sharp change in twenty twenty-one and I felt a lot.
Did you want me to get to that in the presentation first?
Yeah, yeah, go, go ahead.
No, okay. No, you jumped ahead of me. I didn't get to make my Star Wars reference yet.
All right, if I can.
Not for this one.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'm getting, I will.
Now, now the Empire can strike back. Well.
That's right. There's a punchline coming. But no, maybe another question then, since inflation was was, you know, underscored as a risk. I'm wondering if if we've done any modeling, because I think inflation would be offset by sales tax because the the revenue should go proportionally. And to a certain extent, I would think by property tax as well, if there's turnover. So is there any modeling, like, you know, just to kind of think worst-case scenario? You know, we, I I I'm hoping that inflation is short-term, but if it extended for two years at eight percent, you know, do we have a sense what that would do, given that some of that will also be offset by, you know, other factors in our income, in our revenue?
Well, I haven't, I haven't built a model yet to look at that. I understand what you're asking. That offset's going to be modest because sales tax is still not the larger part of our revenue stream. So the issue, the biggest issue for us is the, it, in a typical housing market, as I'm sure the council knows, basic economic principles, if inflation starts to run rampant, people's buying power changes and housing prices should either flatten or go down because borrowing ability changes. It just, when I look at what I understand about Marin, historically, I just not, has not happened here. And so cautious optimism is we still see that revenue stream song, strong. You are correct that inflation should bolster sales tax. Where I can tell you, we are seeing that right now is is the gas tax and the associated sales tax between inflation and just the, you know, what's going on in the world and why gas costs so much right now. We're going to see more gas tax than normal. So we'll get a little boost there for a bit that'll help us deal with maintenance costs on our roads, sort of. But I just, the way Larkspur's structured in terms of revenue streams, I'm not sure the inflationary factors can help us enough on the revenue side to offset the increase to the cost of business.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Proceed.
Okay, so I did have my next Star Wars punchline, which is we have to make a reference to the Empire Strikes Back. And anybody who's been around for a bit with me knows who I think the Empire is. So one of my favorite organizations, CalPERS. It's very strange to be someone who gets CalPERS literature as an employee and an employer because my employee literature tells me how wonderful things are and how amazing the investment portfolio has been doing for CalPERS. And actually, just on a pure numbers basis, that's correct. But on the employer's side, they're still not quite earning enough money to deal with past losses. And this number of employees is down. So the amount of money coming into the system on a payroll basis is down. So the system has some problems that it's coping with. So when we, first of all, going back to that comment about inflation, with CalPERS costs rising, we start to see pressure on to, on wages, wages may rise, associated CalPERS costs rise and wages rise. That's one issue. But another issue that we need to to be aware of that's going on with CalPERS right now is that a lot of agencies like Larkspur made the prudent decision to take advantage of low interest rates to go get bond financing and pay off our unfunded liability to CalPERS. Right decision, big savings to us. We have that well documented. Other agencies done the same. I think most cities in Marin have actually done something similar. Very good. But it doesn't mean our liabilities with CalPERS don't continue to ebb and flow based on the performance of the portfolio. They're just at costs and numbers that are less scary than millions of dollars. They're in the five or six figure magnitude because what they have to constantly do is figure out for Larkspur, for example, given our current payroll and what their actuary says, did they actually return a high enough investment currently to cover the active payroll? And if they didn't, then they have to supplement it by hitting us with some sort of charge. And so we're going to continue to see some charge from CalPERS each year until such time that their portfolio was actually putting them in any sort of super funded position, which hasn't happened since I was a very young person. And I just don't think it'll probably ever happen again. So the reason I'm bringing all that up is we aren't, we are seeing some uptick in our CalPERS cost. For what's called a classic employee, it's catch-up on liability issues on what's called a pepper employee. So that's an employee hired since two thousand thirteen into the system. We do a share of what's called the normal cost. So the employee pays fifty percent of that and the employer pays fifty percent of that. That number's growing, that percentage of what's being charged to do the makeup is growing. So in your packet, there are two charts and we'd be happy to talk about them. So I know they probably have generated some questions. But I wanted to just briefly put them up on the screen. And now that I've made that stump speech about CalPERS there, show you what I'm talking about in terms of these graphs. And for those who can see the colors or read the colors, you'll see that despite the fact that we paid off our unfunded liability with the pension obligation bonds, we're still seeing an uptick in the lump sum unfunded liability costs for safety and for miscellaneous. And that again is to sort of do this annual catch-up of whatever they didn't see in returns that they feel they needed to bring in. So in this case, these are five-figure numbers. These used to be much scarier numbers. We can absorb five-figure numbers, but it's frustrating because we would have hoped when we paid off our unfunded liability, we might never see this kind of behavior again in terms of their portfolio and their charges. And then this is sort of, Kathy's used this chart for many years to sort of show you how the cumulative effect of all the different funds that we have some level of responsibility for stack up. And so you can see how the pension obligation bond brought that overall obligation down considerably, but we still have annual rates that are, that are hitting us from PERS and that are going to continue to sort of have these fluctuations over time. I think from a budgeting standpoint, this prior graph is the one to focus on because this is really talking about how it hits the budget on a dollar basis. But we like to give you both of those. So if you have questions sort of of how our PERS numbers all stack up, we can go into them. Should you ever want to go into the deep dive into the weeds with us, I invite you and all members of the public that the actuarial reports that back up all this information are available to the public on CalPERS website for any agency and for every plan that that agency has a responsibility for. So you can see where the logic they apply and how they come up with these numbers. And that's publicly available information. So now I'm at a pause point to talk about the Empire and what it might be doing to us. So I'll pause for a second, Mr. Mayor, because I know at least it looked like Councilmember Paulson might have some.
Questions from council members. Vice Mayor Paulson.
Yeah, sure. Thanks for that, Dan. I guess if you can go back to the other graph, I Thanks for that, Dan. I guess if you can go back to the other graph, I, you know, I, I think you're right, the weeds, we don't want to go there, but just at a high level, my interpretation of those colors is I, I know we passed the pension obligation bond in twenty nineteen and like December. And, and so what I'm understanding is the lowest tier there, or actually the, um, the, the blue one and the green one on the bottom were absorbed by the P O B and, and are no longer directly paid or, or they're not represented on this graph anymore. We still have to deal with the miscellaneous tier two and the miscellaneous tier one, the miscellaneous Pepper and the safety Pepper. So those are ongoing and the P O B never covered them. But I'm, I'm not sure. It looks like it took a year to kick in and I'm not sure I interpreted that correctly. That's not correct. Okay.
Yeah, so, no, I mean, partially correct, right? No, Kathy, you come up then, okay. Ashley's coming up though.
Can I sit here so I can see?
Oh, sure. Before Kathy speaks, I just want to remind you, some of these safety tiers, these are, these were closed plans. These were when we had safety employees that were actually on the city payroll. So even before you did the pension obligation bonds, those, those pools closed because all our fire personnel left Larkspur to go work for central fire.
Okay, okay, so, okay.
Well, yeah, you just kind of explained it as well. We are looking at our rates, what PERS, what we pay on an employer rate for our employees. So what you're seeing those plans disappearing is because they are closed. So that's why we don't have those anymore. And you can also see where Pepper rates after paying off the U A L, they're down low. So when paying the U A L off has lowered our rates and then the other two plans have gone away. I also want to remind everybody, because Larry was always good about this, Larry. So PERS actuarial reports are two years behind. So we're always two years behind in their reporting. So what we're looking at is not our necessarily are the current current that we think, right? So we're, PERS is always behind their number crunching about how well they've done or haven't done, which then always gives us that unfunded liability. And it keeps, I, you know, when I saw our actuarial reports, I have to say, I was a little shocked that we had our higher, you know, we had more unfunded liability than I would have expected. But I also have to realize they're looking two years back. They're catching up.
I want to emphasize that last point though, because the members of, two members of the council that sit on the fire council get to have a nice shock when we do this presentation for the fire council. Because if, if Kathy was startled by the, these numbers, when we got the numbers for central fire, we were quite surprised how much unfunded liability a brand new agency that had no liability could accumulate. And that's because again, they've run their numbers and said, well, the portfolio isn't where it needs to be. And this is how much your agency needs to contribute to basically backfill what we didn't earn that we needed to earn.
Okay, great. And, and, and by the way, thanks for indulging me. I mean, I think this, this graph, we can go to the next one, which you said is the more important one. So it, it seems, you know, I just wanted to walk away with the big picture that the, the blue and the, and the red bar, safety and miscellaneous are really collapsing. You know, the different safety and miscellaneous from the prior graph and what's happened between, say, twenty twenty and twenty twenty one is a lot of plans have closed. Here it clearly shows that the P O B has started. And so our major, you know, expense now is in that large P O B. And what happens in the stock market and whatever is gonna, is gonna be what's gonna impact our Larkspur budget, you know, on, on the P O B side. But it looks like all those other plans of safety miscellaneous are very low. They're not, they're a nuisance, but they're not what they used to be and they're not gonna come back at, at any high rate.
But I, I think what you meant to say is what's happening in the stock market affects the Calpers portfolio. So it affects the two small bars. What's great about the P O V is you fixed that cost. For people at home, they're going, what are we talking about? Before we issued debt, we were at the mercy of the performance of the Calpers portfolio in terms of what big bar was gonna be. And it was fluctuating and we were under threat that in any given year it could grow quite substantially. So by issuing the P O V, you accomplish two things. One is you fix your cost. We know what we are going to have to pay in any given year until that bond's paid off. So that's great. We have no surprise on that particular cost. The other thing is we know that we're not at the mercy of the performance of the stock market and the Calpers portfolio. That's another way of getting back to what I was saying earlier, though, these two small bars caught us off guard. And what it is, is that it's, we are still at the mercy of the performance of the portfolio for these annual true ups that are gonna occur. And as Kathy's pointing out, since there's a two year lag and we know the market, for example, is not doing as well right now as it was doing two years ago. In, in two years, this trip's probably gonna look kind of ugly to us. So.
Did well today.
I'm sorry. It did well today. I haven't looked at that.
It did well today.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarifications.
But thank you for that. Yeah, thank you for those clarifications because that, that was the whole point of what we did with the bond and was to minimize our exposure to market volatility.
And you knew, you knew your minimum percent on the, on the Calpers unfunded liability was several points higher than what you bonded at. So you, you, at a minimum, though, you saved quite a bit of money.
It was a double win. It was a really good idea.
Yeah, yeah. I'd love if it was seven million a year, but I think it, it was, in the early years, it was seven hundred thousand annually that we would save. And then it starts to go down a little bit as the cost of the bonds go up a little bit. If it was seven million, then I'd really feel like a genius and we'd be doing some pretty awesome stuff. Is that, is that okay? If I do that one year, just move the comma and see what happens?
Okay, back to Star Wars.
Okay. So this is not meant to be read on the screen. You have a printout of this in your packet. This is the preliminary general fund budget. I did notice one typo. The actual column is twenty twenty to twenty one. We'll fix that. That's a great thing about giving drafts. The reason, there's two things. We always give you this high level snapshot at this meeting. And we mark it as draft because we're still refining a few of the line items. And in particular, this is the period where behind the scenes, we start to reconcile the work that Kathy's been doing on the general fund budget with the capital improvement plan budget and what you're gonna get to see at your next meeting in draft. And those two have to kind of all be synced up before we can publish the line item budget. But we know that plus or minus a percent here and there, these are what these lines are gonna look like in the budget that we bring to you. So we can certainly talk about any of this material. And then I felt like I had to make one television Star Wars reference. So for our budget process, this is the way. And on May eighteen, we will do the line item review and the C I P. And then on June first, we'll do the hearing. And if the council is not prepared to adopt the budget on June first, you have the option to carry it over to another date in June. So now I'm available for any more questions or discussion from the council.
Questions for the city manager regarding the report. Councilmember Way.
Just to piggyback on Councilmember Harof's comments, I think we also need to acknowledge that in March of twenty twenty, when we had such tremendous uncertainty, we, uh, we created the ad hoc committee to look at finances. And one of the things was to refinance our bond. And I, I think we need to really celebrate the idea that we pivoted quickly in a pandemic of such uncertainty. We're, we're able to refinance that bond at a lower amount. And I want to acknowledge that that part of that ad hoc committee was not only myself and, and Vice Mayor at the time, Harof, but also Larry Chu, who had been a council member for a long period of time and really provided a lot of economic back history for us. And it allowed us to really weather this storm because we acted promptly and with a lot of efficiency. So I, I think that's a really important part of how Larkspur has maintained its fiduciary responsibilities and it's fiscally responsible to the community. And we'll see, we've seen that now in this budget that we've weathered a two year storm. It's not over yet, but we're in a good position because we had to, we acted promptly. And I think we need to keep that as a policy decision that we make when the next time something creates a crisis for us, that we react properly like that. So kudos to the team for that. And I know Kathy had to really step forward to crunch a lot of numbers as to what we're gonna do when we lost potential sales tax revenue. But we've obviously made some decisions that were essential for keeping our general fund afloat. So just my comment.
Thank you for those comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Harof.
Quick add on to that. Thank you, Councilmember Way, Catherine, for highlighting the role that Larry Chu played in the process that we went through to get to where we are today. He is insights, financial insights and other insights were invaluable to me personally, and I'm sure to you as well. And helping us understand the benefits of the decisions that we, we got to. So Larry, if you're out there, thank you.
Other council member questions? Dan? What's next? I want to make sure that adequate credit is given to our city manager for his financial skills.
Other people make me look great all the time, Mr. Mayor. So appreciate, I appreciate all their support in putting this all together. I, I think I told you at the last meeting, I just find this experience so both rewarding and uncomfortable that I, I haven't been this bullish about the budget in so long. And we have challenges and we got some hard things to deal with over the next few years. You know, and I highlighted a couple of them, but we're just doing a lot better than frankly I thought we'd be doing this year. So that's a tribute to everybody, but it's also a statement that not only has, has the economy come back better than I thought, but I think it's a statement about the draw of Larkspur as a place to be, shop and, and live. That sometimes it's easy to forget what a wonderful place we're in. And the fact that our residents are invested here gets reflected in the fact that we not only see healthy revenues, but also the demands that are put on our services are reasonable. They're ones we can manage over time. And, and not every community enjoys either of those factors. So.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I do know that people move to Larkspur and never leave for good reason. All right, does that conclude your presentation?
It does.
Are there council member questions following the city manager's presentation? Are there members of the public that have questions regarding the city manager's presentation?
Raise hands from our audience and our first comment will come from James Holmes.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I do have reservations about the consultant's conclusion that sales tax revenues will reach pre pandemic levels next year because that conclusion seems so much at variance with what I read and hear regarding current economic commentary that seems to say that spending, consumer spending is likely to decline in the future, reflecting economic slowdowns and, and inflation and, and increasing interest rates and stock market gyrations and, and continuing supply chain problems of foreign problems and turmoil and otherwise. So I'm not sure that we can assume that Larkspur will be insulated from these trends. And so I think we should prepare ourselves for a less, a less optimistic possibility regarding future revenues and perhaps revenues that are not, not quite as low as the sixty seven percent for the, for, for the tot, but which are, which show a, some sort of a, a decline in the future.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on the city manager's presentation?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands from our audience members. And there's no further public comment.
All right, we'll close the public comment and we'll come back to the city council for any further questions, comment or direction. Catherine Way.
I, I just want to take the time to thank the staff for making this hybrid meeting space work. You all know the challenges I'm facing. So it's, I appreciate this and particularly Allison, I have to give you kudos, Allison, for being very collaborative in your emails and prompted things and making it feel like this is a seamless transition. I know it took a lot of your time and effort to make this happen, but I really appreciate that you've spent some time to figure out how we can continue in our Zoom format for the time being. So. Thanks. I see you, Allison there. See, see, I can see you. So thank you for doing all the work you've done to make this happen.
And I'm sure Councilmember Way speaks for all of us in our appreciation of, of your work. Other council member questions, comments or direction? This is an item that's gonna come back to us at the, at a, for a future meeting for consideration of adoption of budget.
Yes.
All right.
Just briefly, I, I know it's already been said, but I wanted to thank the city manager and, and the finance director. I, I, I just think it, it's nice to be in this position and it's been multiple storms. So thank you, guys.
I, I, I believe there's a consistent caution, cautionary perspective that's used from this, from the city side when they look at their budgets. I know we've been very conservative all along with our principles of accounting. And I am confident that this takes a a very close and thorough view of the conditions we're about to face and doesn't necessarily paint an overly optimistic view, but takes a realistic view. So I'm appreciative of that. With that, we'll close the item. If there are no further comments, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn. It's eight o'clock.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Without objection, we are adjourned to our next regular meeting of May eighteen, twenty twenty two. Thank you very much for your attendance. Thanks to the staff for all the work leading for the meeting. And we thank the public for attending. Good night.
Thank you all. Good night.
Have a good day, everybody.